Test, 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 one, two. One, two, three. Okay. Test, test, test.
One meeting of the Ashland Board of Commissioners. We'll start with an invocation by Mike Wertz. Excuse me, invocation by Commissioner Goot and a pledge of allegiance by Mike Wertz.
Let us pray. Father, we are most thankful for our city, Ashland, Kentucky. We are thankful for our city manager, our staff and employees that labor so hard to provide city services and quality of life to our citizens. Bless this board of public servants, our mayor commissioners, as we strive to make the right decisions and in the best interest of our city. Give us wisdom and discernment. We have so many concerns today. The pandemic, our medical center, concerns of our citizens that are trapped in Afghanistan. Give us divine protection and provision in the days ahead as we maneuver through these perilous days. Bless this meeting today. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I stand and salute I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a motion to receive and file the agenda?
Same move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to receive and file minutes?
Same move.
We have any?
Do we have minutes?
None? Okay.
Well, I rescind my motion.
Okay, motion rescinded, all right. Hearings and reports, if the commission would indulge me to start today, do we have members of our healthcare community here in the audience? Okay. Could you all stand for us? Actually, I want to do one step further. If you all could come right before our board here. We want to take this opportunity to recognize you all for the hard work that you all have been doing in fighting this pandemic. I'm going to issue a proclamation on behalf of our commission and our city today in honor of you. Whereas those who have chosen the healthcare profession as their calling serve our community with a reverence for human life and individual dignity, and whereas our nation is experiencing one of the worst pandemics in its history, and whereas physicians, nurses, health aides, EMTs, and many others who work in healthcare are risking their own lives and well-being of their families in an effort to save others, whereas the sick of our community are treated and tended to by devoted healthcare workers who surround and support those afflicted when family is not allowed by their loved ones bedside. And now therefore be it proclaimed, I, Matthew Perkins, Mayor of the City of Ashland and the Board of Commissioners, do hereby honor and extend our deepest thanks and gratitude to the healthcare workers of our community for their heroic efforts and in recognition of their spirit, love, and skill provided to their fellow man during the COVID-19 pandemic. And further, I encourage all residents of Ashland to acknowledge our healthcare workers for their devotion to the health and well-being of our citizens and to heed their counsel on the best course of action to see our city through this pandemic. I do hereby proclaim August 22nd through the 28th, 21 to be Healthcare Heroes Appreciation Week. I think we need to stand and applaud these folks. I have something for you. Thank you all so much, really appreciate you.
Thank you.
And you all don't have to stay for the meeting. I'll turn it over to you all, commissioners. Anyone?
I have just a real quick couple of things on my list, and I'm sort of playing both hats here. Just a reminder that Power Up the Pantry from Kentucky Power is going on in Central Park right now until 6:30. We have collected quite a lot of food this morning for our local food pantries, and I want to give a, it was interesting, we had this report from the Ashland Elks about their charitable giving because I had in my, on my list to thank them publicly, very publicly, for their donation to Power Up the Pantry. They have been collecting at the Ashland Elks for some time for this event and dropped off a whole bunch of food that will go to our local food pantry. So I just want to say thank you to anyone who was involved in that and remind everybody that that's happening today at Central Park, at the end of Chuck Woolery where the old concession stand was.
Thank you to Kentucky Power and all who give. Anyone else?
Yes, I want to piggyback on what she's saying, what Commissioner was saying about the Elks. They are such good corporate citizens, let's call them, because they do also do a lot of good things for veterans. And we sure all love our veterans and appreciate everything they do for that, and that's in addition to a lot of drug programs and other things they do, not only in Ashland but throughout the state, but we sure appreciate them being in Ashland. The other thing I wanted to say is, a good example of one of our young people leaving here and coming back is Allison Stump. This is such a great story. Allison went off and became a dentist, and now, and she decided she loved Ashland so much, and now she's back in Ashland and practicing with Deborah Vincent on Winchester Avenue. We really like for our young people to love their hometown enough to come back and be a part of its growth and success. The other thing I wanted to say was the USS LST 325 will be at the Ashland Port September 9th through 13th. I remember when they were here before and I went on the tour. It's very fascinating to go on that tour. If you get a chance, the hours are, I think, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. that you can do tours. This ship is the last one of its kind and the only one that's working in the United States. These ships rescued thousands and thousands of men during World War II, and it's just amazing to see that and be a part of our history. So if you get a chance, try to get down there sometime during the September 9th through the 13th and go on a tour. I know they'd appreciate it, and you'll love seeing all that. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I just want to welcome everybody. We have more blighted properties on this agenda, I think. We're, this commission is committed to seeing that those properties that are condemned demolished, and so we're stepping that effort up, and I'm thankful for that. You'll see on this agenda over a million dollars in water line replacement, phase two of Belmont Street, and I'm happy about that. I've talked to Amber this morning, a lot of our parks, I always brag about the parks, but I don't brag about, I won't brag about Steve Cole and Mark Hall back there and Jack Hunter, and, but on the park side, a lot of those projects will be completed by fall, and we'll see a lot of ribbon cuttings this fall with our parks. You've noticed the hole, it's like the elephant in the room. The hole in the front, you know, we're on that with, and so we're thankful for that, you know, somebody caught that in time, and, you know, I looked at her, I thought I saw China, you know, and, but we're on that right now, and so we're thankful. That's all I have.
All right.
Yeah, just like to say thank you to the mayor and other commissioners for doing the proclamation for our healthcare workers. Their event that they had last week, it was, it was a great event for information. I know it was challenging for some of them as well to get through that, but they're going above and beyond as far as informing our community and making sure they're doing everything they can to keep us safe. Streets Department and all the departments that helped with the sinkhole and obviously ongoing, but it was really great for me to be able to see our team respond and work, work through that and just kind of watch some of our team members work through something like that, and we still continue to work through it. But thank you all for being professionals and for continuing to respond to that. Hispanic Heritage Month is next month, and my wife is gonna, she's working on some things to, planning right now to do some things next month for that. We did, we started some things last year, obviously mostly virtual, but we're pretty excited about that. That's something she's very passionate about and will be working on, so stay tuned for some events for that coming up next month, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you. City manager, before you, Susan, is this your first meeting back?
Yes.
Well, I thought it was, and I just.
Glad to see you.
We have missed you greatly, and we're so happy to see you back in our city building. I know all of us have missed you, and we, you've been in our prayers, and we're just so glad you're here.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, now city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, just to, everybody feels the same way with Susan being back. It's just a huge miss, huge missing chunk of our organization, and thanks to Christina and Connie and everybody else who helped pick up the load while Susan was out. Also want to thank Chuck Kremens, he came in and did the UV treatment in the chambers today. They did that no charge, just another good example of community helping community. I would like to talk about COVID very briefly, Mayor, with the proclamation especially that you just gave out. I think everybody knows that since August 9th, Boyd, Greenup, Carter, and Lawrence Counties have all been in the red, and Boyd, Greenup, and Carter Counties have been in the red since August 2nd. And that has impacted our community at a large rate. I wanted to give you an update of where we're at in the city. It's also impacting the city staff. We have nine positive cases to date since the 1st of October, 12 current activity, active exposures out of 21 cases, eight employees are out in isolation, seven of which have tested positive, three employees are out in quarantine, and one employee is working at home in quarantine. To kind of put this in perspective, pre-January 21, we had 13 positive cases. This is city staff and/or elected officials. So pre-January 21, we had 13 positives. I'll call it the spring surge, but up to one August, we had another 26 positives, which had us at a total of 39. And since the 1st of August, we've had the nine that I mentioned a few minutes ago. So on a staff of right at, you know, between 280 and 300, we've had 48 of the staff that have tested positive for COVID. If you could flip up, do, want to address the 17th Street and Winchester challenge that we've had.
Feels like when you try to check your phone and your app's updating.
Yeah.
Thinking about it.
Go ahead and go to the second slide, please. So under the old picture tells a thousand words, just to orient you, in the first picture to the left, you can see the police station in the upper left-hand corner. And the purpose of showing you this picture is that digging device is not ours, it belongs to a contractor that we had to work with because the depth of this challenge is over 20 feet to get to the challenge that we had faced. And so the opening on that's probably about 20 feet wide by about 40 feet deep, and it was quite a challenge that we're working on. If you look at the picture to the left, you'll see the light blue tube that's running in. That was a line that we replaced, and where the gravel is over the top of it, that's about 12 feet deep. So I know I was talking to the Ashland area business boosters this morning, and I kind of made a joke out of it about, you know, we had pictures of the eight folks staring into the hole. Part of the challenge was, and I know people have, take good-natured jabs at that, but when you come up to a hole, you come up to a problem like that, you expect that thing to be full of water, okay? Whether it's a waterline break or it's a sewer break. And the interesting thing on this is when that opened up, one, our team doesn't know what's, has been torn up underneath there, what's, what's the word I'm looking for, been gutted out, rooted out by the water. And also the fact that the water wasn't sitting there told us that that was going somewhere else. So that was a very tenuous position for our guys to be in. We didn't know how far back that asphalt was solid or not. And when you look where the connection is on the pipe on the right, that's where the water was flowing, and then it just dropped down, and it looked like a waterfall. And so that goes over to the right where you can see the spreader. Next slide, please. And again, where that, the spreader is, we put that in for safety reasons. We don't own that equipment, that had to be from a contractor, because again, we don't have the equipment that goes that deep. But the problem was not where it went into the 12 feet deep down, the issue originated from another line that's 20 feet down that's made a terracotta pipe. And at some point in time, the seam on that pipe broke, water started churning in there, and over a period of years, it just disturbed this ground that resulted in the sinkhole. I've used the term sinkhole, I didn't realize maybe that people would get confused. It's not a natural occurring sinkhole, like I've been under the impression has occurred out in Russell, that had stuff, had to do with limestone and all that, but this was as a result of the leaking from a CSO line. Next slide, please. And then just another angle on this. For an update, the contractor is done with the connection, the small amount of work that we had to do in the very deep portion of the 20 feet, that's been covered up, it's been smoke tested. There's still a massive amount of dirt in the lines that have to be sucked out, which the crews will continue to do, and we are doing some additional work on that 12-foot line down the 24-inch PVC to ensure that we get a good seal on that and make that better than how we found it. So we expect to be, if you would, we're about halfway done with the job, and now it's back on our crews, the city crews, echoing what the commissioner said. I'm always impressed with every person on this staff, but when you see them in a crisis and you just see the seamless effort of people coming together, is that wastewater collection? Is that streets? Is that APD? Other than uniforms, you really don't know. And it was just a great example of a positive reaction in a crisis. And I did want to give that level of description not only to the elected officials but to the community. Any questions on that, mayor, commissioners?
Well, I think we're blessed nobody was on that when it fell in. I mean.
And just to let you know, there's, obviously we'd be remiss if we didn't look for similar challenges. We've already done a little bit of exploration on 15th, 16th, and 18th Street. We don't see anything right now to indicate. A citizen did report a drop in 16th Street, which we looked. We looked at and tested, it's solid, but we'll continue as soon as we're done with this and get traffic back open to analyze those to make sure that we don't have something else that'll sneak up on us like this one. And then the last thing is, you can go ahead and cut that off, please, Michelle. Last thing is, I want to thank Brad and Lawrence, if you've walked in, you'll notice that they've been painting the city hall, excuse me, the city building, and it, I'm just really proud of them, they're doing some really nice work. It lightens up the, it gives a very professional look in the city building, and I appreciate all the hard work they're doing.
Looks great. It really looks great.
Looks fresh and clean.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, okay. At this point, we will have our public participation. Anyone with a comment or request may come to the podium and address the commission concerning matters related to city business, services, or personnel. Comments related to election issues or concerning personal disputes will not be allowed. We ask that your presentations are limited to five minutes. Only one speaker is permitted per subject. No action will be taken at this meeting. Those with comments are asked to fill out an inquiry form and leave with the city clerk for distribution to the proper city department. Would anybody like to stand up and speak today? All right. We're going to move on to old business.
Old business, item A, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, amending ordinance number 101, series of 1986, as previously amended by amending Article 26 definitions and amending the table of permitted and conditional uses by removing the definitions and permitted use activity of restaurant and creating the definitions and permitted use activities of craft beverage, distilled spirit production, and eating and drinking establishments.
Same move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item B, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, amending ordinance number 101, series of 1986, as previously amended by amending Article 14, Conditional Uses, Section 3, Regulations for Conditional Use Permit, subsection A, Adult Uses.
Same move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item C, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Ashland and GRW Engineers, Inc., for engineering services for the design of the DeBoerde Hill Tank Mixing System and post-BCFS contact basin cover projects for the Department of Engineering.
Same move.
Second.
Any discussion? Just want to make a note that this is funded from the American Rescue Plan Act grant. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Item D, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, granting for a term of 10 years to Kentucky Power Company and its successors in the science of franchise privilege right and authority to acquire, maintain, construct, and operate in, above, under, across, and along the streets, thoroughfares, alleys, bridges, and public places of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, and its successors and signs, lines, poles, and equipment for the transportation, transmission, and distribution of electric energy to the City of Ashland and the inhabitants thereof, and the persons and corporations beyond the limits thereof for light, heat, power, and any other purposes, and for the transmission, transportation, and distribution of the same within, through, or across said city, and repealing ordinance number 107, series of 2021.
Same move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'd stand.
Item E, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, to execute a contract with Bobby's Mulch for the purchase of all labor, materials, equipment, and services for the demolition and removal of all debris of certain property located in the City of Ashland for the Department of Community and Economic Development.
Same move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to make note, I talked to Mr. Pullam this morning and told him, I just got in the car and drove around to all these addresses. This is such a great thing we're doing, and it's only the beginning, so I just want to thank Mr. Pullam's department, Andrew Wheeler's department, for really getting on this and making it happen right away because it was all of our desire to take care of the blight in our city. So thank you very much.
I'm trying to keep, what do we, we had three last, was it three last meeting?
There should be a total of 12 between last meeting and this meeting, and to the commissioner's point, that two are significantly complete at this point. Mr. Pullam, is that accurate?
Yeah, and those two were from.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item F, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, to execute a contract with Bobby's Mulch for the purchase of all labor, materials, equipment, and services for the demolition and removal of all debris of certain property located in the City of Ashland for the Department of Community and Economic Development.
Same move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item G, second reading and final approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor of the City of Ashland to execute a contract with Bobby's Mulch for the purchase of all labor, materials, equipment, and services for the demolition and removal of all debris of certain property located in the City of Ashland for the Department of Community and Economic Development.
Same move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item H, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with Lights Enterprises, Inc., for the purchase of all labor, materials, equipment, and services for the demolition and removal of all debris of certain property located in the City of Ashland for the Department of Community and Economic Development.
Same move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item I, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Ashland, Kentucky, and HDR Engineering, Inc., for engineering services for the design of the 13th Street Tank Rehabilitation Project in the amount of $142,300 for the Department of Utilities.
Same move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is consent agenda, and a resolution to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, adopting, authorizing, and approving the course of action presented by the city manager on the items appearing on the consent agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of City Commissioners of August 26, 2021.
Move.
Second.
Any discussion? Everybody have an opportunity to check everything out? Okay. All in favor? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
New business, item A, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with Wamick Excavating LLC for the purchase of all labor, materials, equipment, and services for the demolition and removal of all debris of certain property located in the City of Ashland for the Department of Community and Economic Development.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item B, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with Lights Enterprises for the purchase of all labor, materials, equipment, and services for the demolition and removal of all debris of certain property located in the City of Ashland for the Department of Community and Economic Development.
Some move.
Some move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item C, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with Lights Enterprises, Inc., for the purchase of all labor, materials, equipment, and services for the demolition and removal of all debris of certain property located in the City of Ashland for the Department of Community and Economic Development.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item D, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with Bobby's Mulch for the purchase of all labor, materials, equipment, and services for the demolition and removal of all debris of certain property located in the City of Ashland for the Department of Community and Economic Development.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item E, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City
of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Ashland and Service Pump and Supply, Inc., in the amount of $45,205 for the raw water intake pump removal and reinstallation for the Department of Utilities Division of Water Treatment.
Some move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item F, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Ashland and Southern Ohio Tranching and Excavating for the Water Line Replacement Project, Phase 2, Belmont Street, in the amount of $1,290,714.25 for the Department of Utility Operations Division of Water Distribution.
Some move. Second.
Any discussion? Well, back to the Commissioner Goode's point, this is where it's not just talk, we are actually putting real dollars, investing in water line replacement for our community, but make no mistake, sewer lines are also on our radar. It's not just one, we've got many that we're looking at, so appreciate the city manager's leadership and of course, utility and engineering for pushing this through. Thank you, gentlemen.
Mayor, I'm just going to add a quick comment to that, just to say, here, here. I'm thrilled to see this on the agenda, and I'm thrilled with the work that the city staff has done to make sure that these things happen, because we have made this a priority. And just for the public's sake, this is above and beyond what we budget for repair. This is dedicated replacements to make sure that our system runs the way that it's supposed to, and I'm thrilled that we're finally getting to these things.
Amen.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item G, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City
of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a public transportation grant agreement between the City of Ashland, Ashland Bus System, and the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet for a fiscal year 2022 capital state match contract grant in the amount of $47,302.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item H, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, adopting the revised job descriptions for water distribution field supervisors and wastewater collection field supervisor, and adding the position for a part-time operator four for the wastewater treatment plant for the Department of Utility Operations, adopting the revised job description for accountant one or two for the Department of Finance, and adopting the amended authorized positions list of the Policies and Procedures Compensation Plan and Classification Plan as adopted by ordinance number 51, series of 2017, as previously amended.
Some move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item I, reading and adoption of a municipal order entitled a municipal order of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute on behalf of the City of Ashland a funding agreement with the Woodlands Foundation, Inc., setting forth the terms and conditions of a grant from the Woodlands Foundation, Inc., to be applied towards the construction of a parking garage and convention center in the City of Ashland.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is it the, we're waiting on the bid package, is the next step, right? I believe, I think we asked about that last.
Which one? I'm sorry, Commissioner, I was distracted.
We're at the, the item I for the Woodlands Foundation.
This is, this is the grant from the Woodlands Foundation of $750,000 towards construction costs, not demolition.
Right. Yeah, we are, the bid package, we expect Mr. Cole within 30, approximately 30 days for the prepared bid package to go out on that demolition.
Good news on that as well.
Yes.
And our thanks again to the Woodlands Foundation for continuing to support our community. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item J, reading and adoption of a municipal order entitled a municipal order of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing the filing of a coronavirus relief fund application for reimbursement of incurred expenses in CRF funds with the Department for Local Government, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute any documents which are deemed necessary by DLG to reimburse the City of Ashland, and authorizing the mayor to act as the authorized correspondent for reimbursement.
Some move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And then the final item, this is the mayor's requesting the consent and approval of the Board of Commissioners for the appointment of Janet Holbrook to the Ashland Planning Commission to fill a vacated seat expiring January 1, 2024.
Some move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are so adjourned. And I guess we.